Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education. On behalf of my fellow members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is February 26, 2014, and we are holding this month’s meeting here in the Board Chambers, 125 South Clark Street. I’d like to note that Board Members Hines and Zop will not be able to join us today. We will follow regular order of events in our meeting today, with the exception of the fact that we will vote on public agenda items before we go into closed session. Madam Secretary, please lead us into place.
Thank you, Mr. President. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The regular meeting of Wednesday, February 26, 2014, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Benin.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Here.
Board Member Quazo.
Here.
Dr. Escotia.
Present.
President Vitale.
Here.
Five members present. We have a quorum. I would also like to recognize Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, our Chief Executive Officer, Mr. James Beverly, our General Counsel, Ashley Gordon, our Honorary Student Board Member, and our Shadow Student this month, Lucas Borges. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And now, I would like to ask Ashley to introduce our Shadow Student today. Ashley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This month, we have Lucas Borges, a sophomore from Lincoln Park High School, joining me as February Shadow Student. Mr. Borges is a member of the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program. He is the Club President of Future Business Leaders of America Chapter and a member of the Model United Nations Team and Economic Club. After graduation, Lucas plans to attend Harvard or Princeton to pursue an undergrad business degree, and then attend Harvard Business School to earn a master’s, if not a PhD.
Okay. Lucas, welcome. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, please. Thank you. I would like to thank President Vitale, the Board Members, Ms. Joseph, and my Principal, Mr. Boraz, for giving me this opportunity to attend the Board Meeting today. This is my first year in Chicago, and I truly feel honored to be here today. My experience with Chicago schools and their personnel has been outstanding since the day we moved here this past July, and I only hope that I can make it even better in my time here. I know today will be a great learning experience for me, and I look forward to getting more involved with CPS and working with some of you in the near future. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Lucas. I had a chance to spend a little time talking to Lucas about his experience, both before he came to Chicago and since he has arrived here. And, you know, one of the things we talked about was the IB program at Lincoln, and Lucas was involved in an IB program in Florida where he moved from. And I asked him, “How did we shape up against the Florida IB program?” And he said, “It’s much — the standards are higher here.” I like to hear that, Barbara. That’s great news for us and the IB program. So, Lucas, good luck in your career, and we’re glad to have you here today.
Thank you.
And with that, we will start with our honoring excellence part of our program. And today, we’re going to recognize National Board Certified Teachers and the CEO’s New Student Advisory Council. Barbara?
Thank you, President Vitale, and members of the Board of Education, members of the community. Today, we have the opportunity to recognize some remarkable Chicago public school teachers who have taken their commitment to their profession and the student’s success by the next level, to the next level, by earning the National Board Certification. Board Certification is predicated on a performance-based, peer-reviewed process that assesses both pedagogy and content knowledge skills. And at CPS, we are proud to be one of the nation’s leaders in the number of board-certified teachers that are teaching across our district. Sixty percent of CPS schools have at least one National Board Certified Teacher, and today, there are over 1,700 board-certified teachers working across the district, including 68 who have gone on to become principals and assistant principals, 17 who are instructional leaders in the networks, and one board-certified teacher who is now a network chief. We’ve worked closely and collaboratively with the Chicago Teachers Union to strengthen and to expand our commitment to board certification, including the Nurturing Teachers Leadership Program. This morning, we have the privilege of honoring the excellent work of 107 newly-minted CPS board-certified teachers, whose names were presented on the screen prior to the Board Meeting. We’re joined by three members of the newest cohort. Sarah Davy from Hammond Elementary. Ms. Khan? Ms. Khan, I’m not going to try the first name. Do it for me.
It’s Vajija.
Vajija Khan, who teaches diverse learners at the Chicago Academy High School, and Veronica Thomas from Langston Hughes Elementary. We’re also joined by Lynn — you know I get it.
Cherkaski Davis.
Cherkaski Davis, who’s the Director of Professional Learning for the Chicago Teachers Union, and like me, Lynn is a past Board Member at the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. We have our President of the Chicago Teachers Union, Karen Lewis, with us. And behalf of the entire Chicago Public Schools community, congratulations to each of our new board-certified teachers. The dedication to your profession and the success of your students is inspiring, and I hope that you will say a few words to us. And we’d like to start with Sarah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sarah Davy. I am a pre-kindergarten teacher, actually in a blended classroom at Hammond Elementary School. I would like to first thank you for recognizing and supporting National Board Certified Teachers this morning, and thank you to Ms. Barbara Bird Bennett and Karen Lewis for working together to support MBCTs in Chicago. I was able to attend the pinning ceremony on Friday night, and it was a wonderful event. So, thank you. Being a part of this process has challenged me to examine and reflect on all areas of my teaching through a microscopic lens: my knowledge of content, how I’ve partnered with families in the community, using technology to enhance the classroom, and much more. After this careful and close examination, I definitely identified areas of my teaching that were going well, but things that I can improve on also. And learning more about myself as a teacher has caused me to see my classroom now through a more focused lens, and this process is something that is just beginning for me, that I will continue to do. And for that, I’m grateful, because I know it will positively impact all of the students in my classroom. And finally, I’m committed to being an advocate for my colleagues at Hammond and other teachers that I know in Chicago to hopefully become National Board Certified Teachers also, because I believe all Chicago students need more teachers who are MBCTs. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, good morning. I’m Vajija Khan, and I teach at Chicago Academy High School. I teach a population of diverse learners, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you for providing me the opportunity to go through this process and all the support that you have continued to provide for the National Board process for us. Just going through the program itself, you know, as teachers, we collect different skills, and we have our own expertise, and we learn a lot through the years, but we apply it on different occasions, and sometimes, there’s always that link missing that ties everything together. And for me, this was — going through this process was more like, “Oh, so I have all these little pieces of the puzzle. I just didn’t know how to make them all fit together and make the best impact that I could have.” And just going through that process gave me the strategic steps I need to take and the systematic way I can put all my knowledge and all that I’ve learned from others through the years to actually apply it in my classroom for the benefit of my students. And especially since I teach students with exceptional needs, everything I know and everything I can learn is used somewhere for some child that I teach. And the best I can be is so necessary, because they’re depending on me to help them bridge that gap. And I’m also lucky to be working at a high school that — where our exceptionally students have bridged the gap with their ACT scores last year. When our exceptional needs scores came out, our scores didn’t go down. So, being able to go there and have more teachers who are National Board Certified and who are providing that level of teaching to those students, we’re trying to ensure that we keep that gap to the minimum. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. I also attended the celebration on Friday, and it was wonderful. I just wanted to thank Dr. Carlos Escotia, and Ms. Barbara Bird Bennett, and Karen Lewis for partnering together to make this process one for all CPS teachers. While the road to National Board for me has been a long and challenging one, it was — it’s one that’s helped me to become more reflective and helped me to make my classroom more student-centered and driven by my students’ interests and their needs. I’m forever grateful to the mentorship that I got through CTU Quest Center, and I’m going to definitely use my new certificate to empower my colleagues and to help my students strive towards excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I’m so sorry. I’m Veronica Thomas, and I teach 3rd grade at Langston Hughes.
So, this doesn’t count to my two minutes. I just want to say — I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. As a National Board Certified Teacher myself, having gone through the process and also renewed last year, believe it or not, during all this other stuff we do, the commitment to excellence is part of what Chicago Teachers Union has always been about. And I think that a lot of times, in the morass of media, we forget what our real focus is. So, I’m just very, very grateful that we have combined our programs, that you trust the process, as Lynn Cherkaski Davis will tell you, which is much more rigorous than many people think. But for the record, we have a 98% achievement rate. The national average is 47%. We are doing something really well at the Chicago Teachers Union. You know, you can applaud too, Mr. Beverly. It wouldn’t hurt you. There you go. That’s what I’m talking about.
That one’s for you.
I know, thank you. So, the notion that we can come together and do magnificent things is always at the heart of what we do, because National Board Certification is truly about a collaborative effort. So, thank you very much for your support, and I hope it gets even stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. You know, I think I can speak on behalf of all of my fellow Board Members that, believe it or not, we understand that teachers are the ones who make a difference in the lives of our children. And the opportunity to support their practice is one that we place a high priority on. And I just want to congratulate those of you who have invested in yourselves with a little bit of help from us and others to make your practice even better, because we know it makes a difference in the lives of our kids. So, thank you very, very much for your effort, and good luck with your new set of skills in improving the lives of our children. Really, thank you very, very much. David, if I may say something? Sure. Just for one minute. I think it was a privilege to participate in the ceremony with Barbara last Friday with the Chicago Teachers Union and Lynn Cherkaski Davis. I really want to express our gratitude for completing this rigorous program and staying with it. You know, as I said, now the agenda grows as you share your knowledge and power to influence all of those around you, so all of our students are able to excel academically. Thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
This morning, we are pleased to honor the CEO’s Student Advisory Council. Our students are accompanied this morning by many of their parents and their principals. I established the Student Advisory Council to provide a forum for our students, who are our most important stakeholders, to have a seat at the table, to make their voices heard, and to develop solutions for initiatives that impact their progress and their lives. As a part of the vision, it was important to me that this council represent the diverse backgrounds and cultures and experience of children across our district. The work of this council is critically important to me, and these youth leaders have been truly, truly inspiring. They are not shy with thoughts. I thoroughly look forward to working with them together. Our meetings will be held, as I’ve shared with them, at universities across our city. Ashley Gordon, our Student Board Member, has been appointed to the CEO Student Advisory Council to provide an important linkage between the council and the Board. These young people went through an incredibly rigorous process for their final selection. As a member of the council, I would like Ashley to introduce the council and two students who have been designated as speakers this morning. Ashley?
Hello. I’m honored to be a member of the CEO Advisory Council. This council gives students a seat at the table and an opportunity to make their voices heard on issues that are important to the students and the district. The council was formed at the beginning of this year. The process was competitive, with 19 students selected from over 130 applications. The application process involved completion of an application with essay questions and an interview process. The students were selected based on their rationale and passion for wanting to be a part of the council, as well as the unique perspective they would bring to the work. Some of the topics we will work to provide recommendations on are college and career readiness, school resources, discipline, and among others. We’ll also build leadership skills and gain a network of supporters and mentors. I am thoroughly enjoying getting to know this passionate group of students, and I look forward to working with them on recommendations for the district. I would like to introduce two members of the council who shared their brief comments: Reynard Gillespie and Sunel Medevic.
My name is Sunel Medevic. I’m a junior at Whitney M. Young Magnet High School, and I’d first like to thank you for having us here today. And I’d also like to thank you, Ms. Barbara Bird Bennett, for coming up with this great idea for the Student Advisory Council. I found out about the Student Advisory Council in November from a counselor at my school, Ms. Chin. As soon as I heard what it was about and what the goals were of the council, I knew I was ready to apply and be part of it. So, I applied, and as soon as I found out I was accepted into the council, I was extremely honored and happy. I knew that I could finally be a voice for the students and help lead the students to a better direction and help you, the Board of Education, understand what students need and want in order to make their education top. And I would also like to say that this is a true honor, and that everything that I hope we get done in this council is for the better of the students and for the betterment of the Chicago area. Thank you.
My name is Reynard Gillespie, and I come from the school, Cell Academy of Fingerwood. I applied for this student council because I seen a great opportunity for my voice to be heard and also to other students of CPS. I see myself as a leader and a voice unheard students that don’t get the type of opportunity to speak up. I also apply because I see myself as a person with an intelligent brain, with ideas that can make a change in our schools and community. Throughout this experience of being with the council, I expect to express my feelings, ideas, and views that change will happen because I believe in change.
Congratulations to all of you. And, you know, on behalf of the Board, thank you for making the commitment of time to let us know and to work with the administration on helping us improve our schools. It’s an honor to you, but it’s also a privilege to us to hear from you. And I want to thank you for taking on this responsibility, and we look forward to your views. I’m sure we will hear from you.
I was just going to quickly say that Dr. Hines and I had the incredible privilege of being part of the initial meeting of this esteemed group of young people, and I have to say I was blown away by the backgrounds, by the passion, by the interest in contributing to their city. And so, thank you guys so much for doing this. Dr. Bird Bennett, I think it was an amazing, terrific idea, and we want to hear your voice. And so, keep at it. We’ll listen.
I would simply add to the Board that I believe that one of our student advisors here also spoke to our senior leadership group.
Yes.
So, Reynard, who just finished, came to our senior leadership meeting and spoke before very passionately before 185 people. And he and I have been sharing visits back and forward at his school, and just a very special young man, like so many of these young people here. And I know you’re going to give me a tough time, but we’re going to have a good time figuring through issues that impact you and impact all of the other students in our district. And thank you so much for agreeing to serve.
We will now proceed with the business portion of the meeting, and management has several reports that they’d like to make to us. And so, Barbara, I’ll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Vitale. For every member of Chicago’s next generation of children to reach their full potential, communities and schools must work together to strengthen the education platform. And this is why we’ve been implementing strategies at the district level, the network level, school level, to promote communication and collaboration with Chicago’s diverse, vibrant community and faith-based organizations. And it’s why we’ve extended key partnerships like Safe Haven to keep Chicago’s next generation productive and engaged during school vacations and summer breaks, and the Safe Passages to keep our children secure on their way to and from school every day. These programs simply would not be possible without the support and the dedication of Chicago’s faith-based communities. Last summer, we came together to operate 100 Safe Haven sites across the city, which is an increase from 60 the previous year. And at these sites, students learn conflict resolution skills, they took trips to cultural institutions, they studied the arts, and received breakfast and lunch each day. And this school year, we nearly doubled the size of our successful Safe Passage program. We also launched the first annual Love-A-Chile Coat Drive. And thanks to the leadership and the generosity of our faith-based community and central office staff, 2,370 of our students got brand-new winter coats before Christmas break. And with the winter that we’ve endured this year, these coats matter even more to our students than we could have imagined. This morning, we are fortunate to be joined by some of Chicago’s faith-based leaders who have gone above and beyond on behalf of our children, and whose leadership make Love-A-Chile Coat Drive an overwhelming success. I just wanted to personally thank you. You are a blessing to this city and its children, and I look forward to building upon our strong partnerships. I’d like to invite Pastor Walter Turner and Pastor Santiago Valentine to say a few words on behalf of the faith-based community.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Santiago Valentine. I represent the Brickyard Bible Church on the northwest side. So, thank you, Madam President, Board, distinguished members of the city, and our good citizens. Our church has been around for 97 years. We’ve had a long, good history in the city of Chicago, and we will continue. A couple of years ago, we sought to — what would our church be doing in the vision for the future? As we sought God and said, “What are we going to do?” We knew that part of that was working with our community, especially our schools. And by the grace of God, I would say, faith-based — Safe Haven was the answer to that. It was no coincidence that what we were planning and strategizing at church was the same thing that was being strategized here. So, our partnership has been invaluable, not only, I think, to you, but to us. We’ve impacted several families every day. We work with over 25 to 40 kids a day, and during the summer, our church alone works with almost 80 kids. That’s almost 80 families that now are coming and saying, “Where else can we get? What else can we get?” We’re not only providing a place where it’s safe for them, and I know because I was a Chicago security guard in the Board of Education for 10 years in a high school, so I know what goes on. But we provide a safe place, a meal, and they’re learning. One child that I’ll tell you quickly about, who came in, who was about two years behind in his reading level, and God, by the grace of God, he’s caught up. In fact, he loves to read now, and if you walk into the church and you say, “Frankie, where’s Frankie?” He’ll introduce himself to you, and he says, “Hey, can I read to you? Because I’m very articulate now.” Yeah, yeah. I was excited, because we didn’t teach him the word articulate, you know? He learned it by himself. But this is what we can do and will do with a partnership between the church and the school, because the kids that fill your classrooms are the same kids that fill our churches each and every day. We love them, and we care for them. We care and love what happens in our schools. We are a partner for you. We are a great asset, and I pray that you would give us the privilege and the honor to continue serving you, Reverend Kyles, our whole office here that you guys have. It is, again, a pleasure and an honor to serve you and the great people of our city. Thank you.
Good morning.
Madam CEO, Mr. President, on behalf of the many religious leaders, faith-based leaders from the faith-based community, thank you for allowing us the privilege to be able to continue to do what we do. At a time when we look and see how many of our kids, our children, it looks like we’re burying more young people than old girls. Thank you for allowing us to partner with the faith-based department for CPS, Pastor Kyles, Brother Philip Hampton, and many others part of that staff, so that when we have to deal with crises that go on in our community, families can now understand better that there is a crisis within their crisis. We want to tell you thank you so much, because this partnership has been enhanced so that, as Pastor Santiago has stated, so that we can continue to do ministry in our communities. Thank you so much. We appreciate all that you have been able to do with us. And then, as we move forward, thank you for allowing us, Madam CEO, to look at expansion, because when we look at the Safe Passage routes that have been instituted from the consolidation of schools, when we look at the Safe Passage routes, there has not been an incident. None of our children have been perpetrators or victims of a crime since we’ve been able to do Safe Passage. We can also say that because many of our children are part now of Safe Haven, none of our children have been victims or perpetrators of crimes, because they have a place to go where we can feed them, nurture them, mentor them, but not babysit them. Thank you so much.
Thank you all from the Board as well. It’s a model partnership to work with you, and we look forward to continuing it. It really — you set an example for others that we try to partner with. So, thank you very, very much.
Mr. President and members of the Board of Education, I would like to turn your attention now to an urgent financial crisis that we face: our pension crisis. Last week, our district was informed by the Chicago Teachers Pension Fund that our required payment for fiscal year 2015 will be $696 million. That represents an $83 million increase over this year’s already staggering $613 million payment. To put this number in perspective, this equals $1,740 per student. No Illinois school district outside of Chicago public schools is required to pay for its teacher pensions from an operating budget. For years, CPS has warned that the financial crisis the district faces due to mounting pension costs, and in this current fiscal year, our annual obligation increased by a staggering $404 million. In the absence of legislative action in Springfield, the percentage of our already-stained operating budget required to pay for pensions will continue to increase and crowd out critical classroom spending. This will mean continued deficits. It will mean reductions to essential education programs and services on which our children rely, and it will mean further cuts to school budgets. The President of the Illinois State Senate recently wrote in an editorial that the failure to pass pension reform would represent, and I quote, “A nightmare scenario for Chicago public schools,” end quote. The state of Illinois must not allow this pension crisis to continue to adversely impact our spending for our children. If unchecked, this crisis has the potential to endanger the real and meaningful — If unchecked, this crisis has the potential to endanger the real and meaningful academic progress that our students have seen. CPS is seeking the same changes recently made by the state of Illinois to their pension system. We estimate that if the Illinois pension reform package were applied to CPS, that this would bring nearly $250 million in savings to the district this year alone. We plan to meet with representatives of the Chicago Teachers Union next month to hear ideas for addressing this crisis. If we are able to meet this challenge, we will guarantee a more sustainable future for our district and more stable retirement for the teachers who have dedicated their lives to their profession. I urge our leaders in Springfield to take action to address this crisis, and I pledge that Chicago public schools will work with our leaders in Springfield, with CTU, to develop a bill that serves a solution to this crisis. I'll pause at this point so that my team members can answer any questions that you may have. Tim? Every child in every community in Chicago deserves to learn in a clean, well-maintained school. But our current approach to facilities management is inefficient, costly, and onerous for principals and school leaders and their teams, and we have heard this repeatedly from our school leaders. To address this inefficiency, the district has engaged in a competitive process that led to the recommendations we're making today to adopt a more efficient and cost-effective approach to facilities management. We also engage our stakeholders in this effort, including Organized Labor and the Chicago Principals and Administrators Association. We believe that a new facilities management approach is needed to improve the quality and the level of service at all of our schools. We also want to improve the day-to-day experiences and tribulations of our principals in a way that allows them to focus more time and more energy on academics, and less time in maintaining the cleanliness of their buildings. The new approach that we're recommending today will save the district approximately $40 million over three years. I'd like to introduce our chief administrative officer, Tim Colley, to provide an overview of the facilities management recommendations that the board will consider for today. Tim?
Thank you. President Vitale, members of the board, over the last three years, as we've strived to improve academic outcomes for our students and invested in ways to keep them safe, as we just heard with Safe Haven and Safe Passage, we've been trying to significantly increase the discipline in how we operate the district, and we've made great progress. We've brought in more professional leadership in various departments, we've worked much more strategically with our suppliers, we've streamlined our processes so that we can improve outcomes from an operations standpoint while saving money. Just a few examples before I get to facilities. In food service, we've improved the food. Obviously, we're serving 8,000 more meals a day, so kids are eating more. We've improved the food while saving over $25 million in expenses and increasing revenue. In transportation, we've improved the safety of our vehicles, the professionalism of our bus aids, and our on-time performance while taking out over $10 million of expense over the last two years. In IT, we've got over 50,000 more devices in our schools now than we had just two years ago, and our bandwidth usage is up two and a half times. But our costs are down 24%, and we have 75 fewer people in our IT department. So this increased professionalism is something that we're doing in all of these operating areas so that we can keep money focused in the classrooms, and this is very consistent with our CEO's strategic vision, with Pillar Five being improved operational discipline, but also in Pillar Two, creating systems of support around our students. Well, as Barbara Bird Bennett said, today we're here to talk about facilities management, whoops, and how we're transforming what we do in managing our 700 buildings that serve as our schools. So it's a very brief presentation, but I think it's a compelling story. First of all, as I've said, we've saved significantly over the past couple of years, and I'll summarize for you, that we've saved over $50 million since 2012. And this new approach isn't just about money. It actually improves the cleanliness of our schools, makes our principals' lives easier, and adds to that savings by about $40 million between now and fiscal 2017. We're bringing in two world-class partners, Aramark, who we're familiar with because we brought them in to run our food service operation this year, leading to some of the improvements I mentioned, and Sedexo Magic, companies that have world-class standards, and I'll talk a little bit about that. And we recognize that this is a big change in our buildings, and we're working closely with principals, with our partners and the unions, to work through this so that we can make sure that as the schools get cleaner, we free up principals and make their lives easier. As I said, we've made some great progress in this area. This isn't a sudden change. We've been working closely with all of our partners to reduce the number of engineers that we need to manage our facilities, in scheduling custodians better so that we can actually clean the buildings with fewer, and cut unnecessary overtime. We had an enormous amount of overtime that frankly wasn't necessary and didn't lead to better outcomes. We've negotiated better rates and managed the energy in our buildings better. We're performing more work internally. We were outsourcing a lot of work that our very talented employees could do themselves, and so we've brought that in-house to give more of the simple repairs to engineers and some of the other work around the schools to our custodians. And through much more professional procurement, we are working better with suppliers. We have fewer suppliers, we're doing more strategic purchasing, we've been able to save money there. So, these are just some of the areas that have contributed to that savings of over $50 million. So we've made great progress over the last two years. But what we found as we looked at the situation is we really haven't improved outcomes. We've done it more efficiently, but we're using the same old technology in schools, using mops and buckets to clean a hallway. We have still too many suppliers, even as we've tried to narrow the pool, we still have schools that are buying from a lot of different suppliers, in fact, over 1,000, and there's no consistency in the products that they're buying or how they use them. We've got principals who have been frustrated with us spending time and money out of their budgets to manage their buildings, when they would rather be spending that time managing the instructional quality in their classrooms. And sadly, and this has been an eye-opener for me, as I walk through schools now, I used to go in, and if a hallway didn't have a lot of litter in it and it looked basically clean, I thought it was clean. Now, as I looked more closely, and our team has understood what real cleanliness standards are, you notice that actually the mops and buckets have just moved the dirt around on the floor. They actually haven't picked it all up, and that our schools aren't as clean as they need to be and as our children deserve. So this new approach transforms the way we manage facilities. We're bringing in these two firms, as I mentioned, and how we're going to do it is that Aramark will assume all of our custodial management. We'll still have 825 board custodians, as we do today, and work with some private custodial firms who will support Aramark in this, but they'll manage them. They'll schedule them, they'll bring in new equipment, they will train, supervise, and make sure that they're delivering. Sedexo Magic has a dual role for us. We're bringing them in to provide overall facilities guidance for us from a central standpoint. How do we schedule our engineers? How do we prioritize the maintenance projects they work on today to avoid capital investments a year or two from now because we didn't do what needed to be done in the building? How do we plan better? How do we use technology to track energy usage in our buildings so that we can make sure they're warm when they need to be and not when they don't need to be? How do we manage the lighting so that it's optimal for students and staff but not on when it's not providing any real value? Sedexo Magic has a second role, too, in that while we make this change, we're going to a pilot in 33 schools where they're gonna take over the whole kit and caboodle. These are schools that are already entirely privatized with outsourced engineers and custodians, and we're gonna do a trial there where Sedexo manages everything in the building. And over the next couple of years, so we're not making any hasty decisions here, over the next couple of years, we'll see if there's opportunities for even more improvement than we can make in the balance of the district. So here was the big aha. As I said, as you walk into a school now and you think it looks kind of clean, what we've learned, and this was, our whole team, I think, was surprised, is that we are really in the dark ages. There is now equipment that you would see in an office building, or one of the museums in town, or the United Center, or McCormick Place, the little mini Zamboni that you see over on the right there, that actually goes up and down the hallways and pulls the dirt in, using environmentally friendly and safe chemicals, that actually cleans the hallway much more efficiently than we do today and gets it cleaner. There are these five levels of cleanliness that we've learned about. A hospital would be Level One. The commitment here is that every one of our schools will be a Level Two standard every day, every school, every day. And for perspective, we think the vast majority of our schools today are threes and fours. We have maybe a few twos, but most of them are threes and fours, and sadly, we think we actually have some fives. That will stop as soon as we sign these contracts, as soon as we get this implemented. We also, as you look on the left, I mentioned we're still using 1,000 suppliers on janitorial supplies, everything from the chemicals to clean the floors, to the paper towels, the toilet paper, the window cleaning, and some of it may not be as environmentally friendly and student-friendly as it ought to be, because every decision is being made independently. And so what we've learned is that we're using far too much. We think we can reduce chemical usage by 30%, have it be safer, have it work better, and be much more effective and efficient. So when we walk into the schools beginning next year, we're going to see a completely different level of cleanliness, and we're gonna feel better about how it's getting there. Aramark and Sedexo are real pros at this. We've been to their call centers, we've seen what they can do, we've seen the technology they've used. They've actually helped us learn a lot about the gap between what we're doing and what's being done in a lot of other areas. They have experience operating in schools, as you can see here, Aramark in Houston, Providence, Sedexo in Detroit, at Jackson University. Aramark's also at the Field Museum campus, and the United Center, and McCormick Place. And as I mentioned earlier, we think there'll be some synergy because they're running our food service operation, and by the way, halfway through the year, they're doing a great job. So we're confident that these world-class companies bringing technology, processes, a single point of contact, as you can see, 24/7, 365. Principal calls the number and says that we're missing paper towels in the first-floor washroom. We've set this, we've told them, we want them to be like Jimmy John's. Like, the guy is showing up with more paper towels before the principal hangs up the phone. They'll bring expert staffing, training, and performance management that frankly has been a little bit of a variety on that, shall we say, in our schools. Principals have been important in this. As we got that first $50 million in savings, we have heard from principals that they weren't wild about the way we managed it. We took central control of managing the engineers because we figured we're better at deciding how the boiler ought to be maintained than a principal who's better at deciding how an instructional program ought to be maintained. But in the course of making that transition, principals had to manage custodians, which they did not like at all. They did not like having to budget out of their student-based budgeting funds for janitorial supplies. So what we've done for this is we've pulled it all in centrally, and we're gonna leave that money in the schools. It will be part of the student-based budget that they will receive again next year, and they won't have to spend it on these areas. They won't have to schedule staff, they won't have to manage performance issues on their staff. And as I said, they will have a call center that they can pick up the phone and call anytime and get status reports on where every project is anytime they want. And then, Aramark and Sedexo will have field managers who will stop by periodically to ensure their satisfaction, and every principal knows how to email me if they're not getting what they want. We believe that not only will we get the cleanliness, not only will we have happier and more productive principals, that there is $40 million in savings to be had here. And that's, as we face the financial crisis with the pension and the other challenges in the district, as we want to keep money in the classroom, this $40 million is important. That allows us to keep funding for schools on things that really count. So this will make, we'll have more productive staff, we think we could actually be about 50% more productive than we are today. We'll have lower capital maintenance down the road. If you maintain a roof today, you won't have to replace it in three years. And as I said earlier, improved energy efficiency. So this is truly a win-win-win. So to sum up, better standard for clean in every school, every day, principals freed up to do more of what they really want to do, we'll have more savings that keeps funds in the classroom, and I think we will finally feel that our students, who we've seen, we saw the Student Advisory Committee, world-class students, will finally have an organization that supports them in a world-class way. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, any questions for Tim? Henry?
Tim, I applaud this. Did I understand you to say that we still had custodians that were not Aramark custodians?
Yeah, so the way it will work is that we'll have, we have 825 custodians who are employees of the board, and we will assign them to schools during the day. So they will support principals during the day for assisting in cleaning up the lunchroom between lunch periods, for that, just memory from my grade school, for the child who throws up in a classroom, somebody's gotta come clean that up. So the custodians will be there during the day to provide support. The real cleaning will happen at night. We currently use three outside custodial firms, RGB, UBM, and WeClean. Two are minority-owned businesses, one is a woman-owned business. Aramark will actually, and Sedexo will be contracting with them to provide the people for their teams. Aramark will manage them, but those same firms will be providing the people, but the cleaning will be done at night. So there'll be a big change for those folks. They'll be coming in and driving the Zamboni in the middle of the night, but that's what, so those same people will be employed.
And will Aramark manage the custodians during the day?
Yes, they will provide the work processes that they'll need to do, they'll do the scheduling for them, and they'll oversee them, obviously in partnership with our own facilities management team.
And will this arrangement hold in parallel with the engineers and Sedexo Magic as well?
Yes, so the engineers will still have the board engineers who will be assigned to our buildings. Unlike two years ago, when we would assign them based on the square footage of the building, we'll actually be assigning them based on the needs of the building. So, two schools that are both large, but one's brand-new and one's 100 years old, guess which one needs more engineering support? We will now be assigning the engineers to work that needs to be done instead of to square footage that is just sitting there. And Sedexo will help us with the training, the scheduling, the, kind of, the management of that engineering team, with their world-class standards from buildings all over. So they have so much more insight into how to manage this than we do.
You mentioned energy efficiency savings. Is there any capital involved? So are we gonna have motion-sensitive lighting or heat-sensitive lighting that'll be installed so that we are optimally using what would be otherwise termed green or LEED-type, if we're trying to get LEED-type buildings?
Yes. So there could be, there is actually some capital investment built into our contracts with these firms, and they're making the investment, and our savings are net of anything that they're doing, so the savings are true to us. We will evaluate with Sedexo's guidance additional energy savings investments that will pay out for us quickly. So as you may recall from the capital plan over the last two years, we've done lighting retrofits that have a very short payout. They make the schools brighter, they use less energy, and the capital pays out in about two years. So they'll help us with things like that. One of the big ones that they've identified already for us, monitoring systems. So we actually don't know what it's costing us day in and day out to heat a building, how much energy we're using, and they think, if we can monitor that, we'll know where the problems are, we'll be able to see where we have opportunities.
In terms of having the capital to capitalize, not to be redundant, but to capitalize on these opportunities that'll be identified?
Absolutely, and only the ones that have a short payout. We won't be doing pie-in-the-sky things, that big dashboard monitors that nobody's looking at, right? So very down-to-earth kind of stuff.
Tim, you know, as a former principal, facilities and environment were extremely important to support the instructional program and school culture and climate. So when you speak about supporting principals, I think of two things: immediate follow-up when things need to be done, and where's the accountability? So how will principals be consulted about the quality of services and when changes are needed fast?
So, as I said, they will have a service number that they can call 24/7, 365 days a year. So if they have, if they see issues with supplies that are out, paper supplies that are out in washrooms, floors that aren't clean, litter on the ground, snow that's not plowed, they will call that number. The incident will be tracked, they will be provided status on it, and we're going to be able to see where we have performance gaps. They will also have a regular manager, so they'll sit down, I think it's at least monthly, with an area manager from Aramark or Sedexo, depending on which schools they're in, who will sit down with them to review how they're seeing the situation. When they show up in the morning, is their school as clean as they expect it to be? Will it set very clear standards for them? And they'll know what's expected, and if they don't see what they expect to see, they will be calling into those service centers and establishing that there's a problem. They'll still have our leadership team that they can draw on to say, "I'm not getting what I need." So the principal's still in charge, just the way the work gets done is different. So, there's no question, Barbara Bird Bennett's the CEO of this building, she doesn't schedule the custodians, but if there's a hallway that's not the custodians, but if there's a hallway that's not clean, I hear about it, and we fix it. So the principal's not being disempowered, they're being freed up, they still have the power to actually ask for higher standards in their building.
Jesse?
Thank you.
These contracts that we've seen in the past, sometimes when things aren't working so well, they're so big that it's difficult to transition and just terminate if it comes to that. Is there any mechanism, penalty provision in here if things aren't working so well that, you know, we get their attention?
Yes, there are, we have the right to terminate these contracts if we're not satisfied with what we're seeing, and in the course of their performance, there's opportunity to get damages for work that's not being done. We're optimistic that neither of those scenarios would be necessary, but as an attorney, you know, you want to make sure.
You've got to think about the worst-case scenarios.
We'd rather have the flexibility to manage this, but we're optimistic that we're going to work with them to get great outcomes.
Other questions? Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you.